Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August 8th meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Would you please join us and stand as we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for my nation and her God, and for its citizens, for its people, and for its justice so high.
Board members, you've had a chance to examine the agenda for tonight. Are there any alterations? May I have a motion then to accept the agenda?
So much.
Second, thank you. All in favor? Okay, agenda stands as read. We give the public an opportunity to speak to the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board tonight? Kim, if you would come up to the microphone, please? And for the record, Kim, if you would just state your name and your address.
Kimberly Kaskin, 1211 Jared's Cross, Webster, New York.
Thank you. And tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Kim Kaskin. I would first like to thank the PTSA, Mr. Lamatica, and Ms. Blue for putting the students at Clem North first. I thank the PTSA for making myself and others feel as though they are part of the solution for issues that come up at Clem North. I feel part of a team with Mr. Lamatica, Ms. Blue, and the PTSA in solving the issues of larger classroom sizes. I was one of the many parents who signed the petition to have a teacher hired for the fifth grade instead of maxing out the students in each class. The reason I signed was that I felt that 26 kids in a classroom is too many for various reasons, including but not limited to new teacher evaluations requiring teachers to now comply with stricter rules that the state has placed on them in order for them to keep their job. These new rules and regulations are going to take up more of the teacher's time, which lessens the time they have with the students' needs. Also, children are facing more challenges such as anxiety and attention deficit, among other issues. These challenges have to be addressed by the teacher as well as any behavioral issues children may have during class. The bigger the class, the less time for individual attention. In addition to that, classrooms are mixed with different learning abilities, and the teacher is responsible to assist each child at their level to achieve the best goal. With so many students, I find this to be just about impossible, not to mention the stress on the teacher. If you have a child that is struggling in school, the teacher will not have the time to assist them as much as they would like. Their child will not meet their goals and will be frustrated. If your child is excelling in school, the teacher will not have the time to challenge their child further, which will lead to boredom and ultimate frustration for the child. And if your child is quote "average," their child has the potential to be overlooked, and that will leave the child feeling unimportant. In closing, I hope that we will work together, parents, teachers, superintendents, and residents of Webster, to find the best possible way to stretch our tax dollars to achieve the excellent results we all want. I realize that today's economy requires all of us to make tough decisions. However, of the last places I would want understaffed is our classrooms because the classroom experience so directly impacts our children's welfare. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else in the public would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our celebr-- oh, we don't have any liaison people tonight either. Okay, we move on to our celebration of excellence. I thought we were going to be honoring someone for their dedication and passion to teaching physical education, but Jen, you don't look like Kevin.
It's awesome replacement.
Oh, okay. Well, then, why don't-- is it Gary?
You don't want to be the rose between two thorns?
I would that was the rose.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Kevin couldn't make it tonight. He's actually on vacation. I think he's fishing, which is one of his loves. We honored Kevin earlier this year when he received the Central Western Zone Elementary PE Teacher of the Year. He was nominated by another one of our colleagues, Jen Forsy. And one of the things that really sets Kevin apart from, I think, the average teacher is I kind of call him the Pied Piper with kids. Kids are attracted to him. He truly engages the kids every day in every class. He makes it fun for them. They learn. It's just an amazing experience to watch Kevin teach in his classroom, which is a gymnasium, or outside with the kids in physical education. So we're very proud to honor Kevin tonight and celebrate his excellence, which again tags onto Webster's excellence. So Kevin, thank you very much. Enjoy your vacation. Hopefully, he's catching some big ones out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see-- oh, right to the report? Okay, so I don't see Mr. Lancer. I'll set this up for our audience. Physical education once stood at the center of the ancient Greek culture, and physical and intellectual learning experiences were essential and inseparable part of ancient Greek education. The belief in a sound mind and in a sound body were the basis for the quest, the Greek quest for excellence. So hopefully, the presentation tonight will answer the question, why or how is physical education and athletics important in the schools? So if that didn't set you guys up--
That was impressive.
I was very impressed.
Well, first, I'd like to introduce Jen Sullivan, one of our elementary physical education teachers at Plank South. Can I get the planks correct? Jen is actually finishing up her admin experience and has volunteered to help with this presentation, and we couldn't have asked a better person to come in and speak about physical education. She's there every day. She does a great job, again, excellence in teaching. And so we're going to turn the physical education piece over to Jen, and hopefully she'll answer your questions. Mike?
All right. Well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come here and share with you a few of the reasons why physical education and athletics is an integral part of the high-quality education that we provide students here in Webster. And I want you to understand the commitment that the physical education staff has towards the board goals, specifically the academic board goal. So if you look up on the screen, there are three quotes there. They're all from research-based resources. And the first quote really talks to the fact that quality of physical education leads to lifelong fitness. That is our ultimate goal as physical education teachers. We want the kids to connect with at least one thing, if not many things, that we're teaching them so that they can hopefully go on and become lifelong movers. And the second two quotes really state that there's a correlation between physical fitness and academic achievement, kind of like what Mr. Sefalata was talking about. So, does Webster provide high-quality physical education that would promote lifelong fitness and in turn support academic achievement? We like to think so. And the data shows from this past school year that 96% of the Webster students met their SLO-targeted goal. Those goals were based upon growth and achievement, not only on knowledge of being a physically-educated person, but also on physical skills, fundamental locomotor and manipulative skills that are necessary and required to be able to participate in physical activity. So we like to think that we are supporting that career and college readiness. We're getting our kids armed with the knowledge that they need to be fit. Hopefully, they're taking that knowledge with them and becoming fit people, and that then hopefully will lead to academic achievement. So we have the college and career readiness portion of the goal covered, but what about the community aspect? And we are very involved with the American Heart Association. Our philosophies and goals really go hand-in-hand, wanting to promote health and wellness. And a lot of our schools work very closely with the EHA. For example, this past school year, between jump rope and hoops for hearts, our schools raised over $64,000 for the American Heart Association, and 100% of that stays here in our community, goes to things like training first responders, providing CPR and AED training, funding research that promotes health and wellness. So the students get to participate in activities that are healthy for them, and it goes right back to our community. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to highlight a few things from each of the levels, starting with elementary. One of our learning standards, New York State learning standards, number three, is resource management. We want the kids, again, to leave with the knowledge that they can go out into our community and be physically active people. With that, we take all of the fourth graders to a fun run at North Ponce Park. So 100% of our fourth graders have the opportunity to participate in a run that's sponsored by Fleet Feet. Many people, people on this board, are people that, as adults, participate in 5Ks, marathons, corporate challenges, things like that. We want them to get that taste of what it's like in hopes that they'll find their passion and hopefully participate in things like this as they get older. We also take the kids' orienteering at Webster Park. All of the fifth graders have the opportunity to go. That becomes an activity where they, again, are participating in physical activity while they are there. They're seeing our parks, and it becomes a very co-curricular day. They're map-reading. They're seeing the ecology that's at the park. So social studies and science are involved in the day as well. Many of our schools have square dancing, and Mike Callahan comes in. And we don't think of it as typical, old-school, traditional square dancing. This is team-building. This is listening skills. It gives the kids an opportunity to have to be together with eight people or seven other people and really pull together and follow directions. And let's face it, I mean, it's a challenge. There are cooties involved, but our kids definitely, I definitely see the benefits of it. And when they get past that, there are way more smiles than when they first enter the gym saying, "Oh, square dancing." Many schools also take their kids to Northern Hemisphere and give them a gymnastics experience. A couple other things, some of our schools take the kids fishing. We were saying Kevin earlier, Kevin Sarris is a big proponent of fishing, and it's a great lifetime skill that the kids are provided with. Also, many schools have jazzercise come in. On the half-days, when there's the conference days in November, our schools participate in volleyball playdays, where we give the kids the opportunity to make a choice. Do you want to go home and potentially be sedentary, sitting down, playing video games? Or do you want to stay at school and make a really healthy choice and participate in physical activity for the afternoon? And a lot of our kids do participate and stay and have a great, a great time participating with each other and having physical activity, but fine. We also have juggling workshops come in. The jugglers come in, they work with the kids, they give them skills and opportunities to work on hand-and-eye coordination. But in juggling, there's a lot of crossing the midline, and when you're crossing the midline, you're building brain stimulation, and it's a really beneficial activity. So we always tease the kids that, no, we're not setting you up to try to be in the circus someday, although that would be cool to come watch you play in the circus, but, you know, we're giving them these life skills that they don't even realize that they're working on because they're having a really good time. We already kind of went over Kevin, but we are very proud to have him on as part of our physical education staff, so it's good to have it in there twice. The middle school, again, to support that, we want kids to find something to be lifelong movers. They do their annual pumpkin run for their sixth graders. They also, at Willink this year, did something called a Final Five. Our, the Danielson Framework talks about getting students involved. We wanted it to be student-centered, having them activate-- I can't think of the word.
Create.
Like, create opportunities for themselves. So this opportunity is very student-centered. They come up with teams. They are involved in running the event. And the hopes are that, you know, on a smaller scale, they can go in their neighborhood and have a three-on-three basketball game, or go outside and organize some people to go to a local park and play a pickup game of softball if they've been given these skills and the teachers are working with them, teaching them those skills. They also do a spring into fitness unit, very much so tied to their SLOs. They want the kids to gain that knowledge on muscular strength and muscular endurance so that they realize in the beginning of the year when they're pre-tested and they know what their deficiencies are and what they need work on, and the teachers then give them these opportunities to really focus in on where they're lacking and where they need help. And they provide a whole bunch of different training options so that, again, what's good for one person isn't good for the next, and these students have a lot of different variety and opportunities to learn how to build their muscular strength and their muscular endurance. At the high school, they're doing some incredible authentic fitness projects. I should have copied them and brought them to you because I was just awed at looking at what these kids are doing. But some of them really are, the students, are taking the knowledge that they've learned throughout their physical education experience, and they are creating fitness programs, be it kickboxing programs or weightlifting programs, and they are creating those and teaching those to their peers. And it's become a really authentic experience for them where they're really using all that knowledge. There are also fitness and nutrition logging there. Even some of the elite athletes were very surprised to say, "Wow, I didn't really realize that I'm lacking this nutrient," or that, "Man, that is a lot of calories, way more than I was burning," or, "Wow, I thought I was more active than I was," or things like that. So it's really eye-opening for them. And again, it spans and it can be differentiated for kids who are very inactive to the elite athletes. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Scott Morrison, who's going to talk a little bit about athletics.
Thank you, Jen. First, this year, Gary and I, it was our first experience with PE in quite a long time, long enough to remember. But I was very impressed going to their PE meetings. You can see the results when you walk into the classrooms, but go to a PE meeting and see how those results are obtained. I invite you to go behind the scenes. It's the second Wednesday of every month at Plank South. We'll feed you breakfast, and you can see some, the thought that goes into the process. And you have a lot of different physical education teachers, so you have a lot of different opinions. With PE, you do have a lot of different opinions. But when they come out of that meeting, they're all for one and one for all, and I just think that I was very impressed this year, my first year through it, seeing how much work they put into it, and they just do what's best for kids. Now with athletics, the 2012-2013 season was another banner year. We had 178 total teams, 3,570 roster spots. But please be aware, both Gary and I encourage multi-sport athletes. We don't encourage the one sport wonders, and I think we've been pretty successful. One of the most successful districts in the county on getting multi-sport athletes. These athletes created, they won eight Monroe County division titles. They won 14 Section V titles, a regional title. We produced two state champions. One that steered my heart is we had seven sportsmanship award winners. So not only were we successful playing, but we acted successfully out there. We had eight Coaches of the Year. 111 athletes were named to the Monroe County All-Star Team. We had three New York State honorees. That means we had three players in our district that were named Player of the Year for New York State. We had a New York State champion. We had two All-American athletes. We had one New York State Player of the Year, and we also had one Section V Player of the Year. Before I turn it over to my good friend Gary Tyrone, I just want to highlight a few things that are going to be taking place this year with athletics. Our homecoming will be on October 18th and 19th with the parade on the 19th. And we are venturing into something new this year. Our ice hockey programs are going to be playing outdoor hockey December 21st at Frontier Field. So it's going to be a new experience, and we wish you could attend. Dress warm, but we can find a warm place for you if you can't dress warm.
Scott makes a mean hot chocolate.
Just a quick question. Football game Friday night and Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
And when was the hockey game?
December 21st. It's a Saturday.
Good job, Scott. Just to continue talking about the success of athletics, we're going to kind of tie it into the classroom also. I think athletics is one of our best indicators of accountability because the kids have to meet certain standards in order to continue playing on our teams. We have a curricular eligibility policy in place, and our APs and principals are on board, and they do a great job of talking with kids that may need some additional help, getting them to succeed in the classroom. As you can see, our varsity GPAs, and we did it just by seasons, and you can see that all three seasons are in the 90%, which I think is fantastic. So great GPAs for our varsity athletes. Another indicator of success in the classroom is the New York State Scholar-Athlete Award, which is, again, just an award that goes to varsity teams. And you can see that 91% of our teams, our varsity teams, had a GPA of 90% or higher, which is fantastic. In the community, I'm sure many of you have gone by when you've seen our teams out there doing something in the community, whether it's cleaning up the yards around, you know, the Village of Webster. One of our teams goes in there, and they pick a Saturday, and they help clean out. They knock on doors and see if anybody needs any help. They go to the Webster Golf Course. They help clean up in the spring as giving back to that great asset that we have in Webster. We do the Buddy Walks, the Relay for Life. We lose the training wheels when we work with autistic kids. So there's a lot of great community service programs that our athletes give back, and we have 100% of our teams that do some type of community service.
I'd interrupt you, but Buddy Walk this year, since we have so many participants at Webster, it's going to be in Webster. And it's going to be at the Field House on October 6th. So it's a great experience, so come on out. They're going to take over the Thomas campus using the Field House and track and so forth. So, sorry.
Scott's Rain Man when it comes to calendars and dates, if you can see. Jog his memory, and he'll come up with it. Another additional highlight, earlier this year, Gatorade ran a promotion, and thousands of high schools applied to Train with a Pro. And we were the selected high school this year in the Western New York region to work with the Buffalo Bills, and they sent TJ Graham, who was a wide receiver for the Bills. He came for two hours, worked with our kids. It was fantastic. And what I really enjoyed from TJ was the message that he sent. He talked about being, "Play every sport. Try it." He talked about how baseball, how track, and other sports that he played helped him become a better football player. He also talked about commitment in the classroom. He knew that if he didn't have his grades up, he wasn't going to go anywhere. Just a great message from TJ. He connected with our kids. Like I said, he was right out there. He did all the exercises. He was a little late getting there, so Coach Watkins had a little reminder that doesn't matter who's late, you're accountable for being late, so they got in a little extra exercise that night. This is also something that's pretty cool. Oliver Dorisi is one of our, well, he's a 10th grader, he's going into 11th grade, a trader, and he was chosen from thousands of kids. He had an interview to take part in this experience. He's down in the Dominican Republic, and I believe right now, correct, Jen? And he's playing baseball through the Boston Red Sox organization. Dear to Mr. Morrison's heart here. And not only do they get the right message, because it's not about baseball. He's doing community service down there. He's working in the community of the Dominican Republic. So again, it's that tie. It's not just about athletics. It's about what you take from that experience and give back. Again, congratulations to Oliver. I think it's a great experience for him. It's a reflection on Webster, and we're awful proud of him. I think that is our presentation for tonight, and we open it up to questions.
All right, we'll start to my left. Mike, anything?
Thanks for all you guys' work, and I think I, or I should say, I hope you're well-rested because I know your busy season is about ready to start in another couple of weeks.
A week for Monday.
All right. Good luck.
Thanks.
Fritz, anything?
No questions, but some comments. Jen, great job with the PhysEd presentation. Webster's always been on the cutting edge with their PhysEd curriculum, and it's so nice to see how the shifts have been made with 21st Century PhysEd. It's also refreshing to see that PhysEd is for everyone. You don't have to be an athlete. You don't have to be an All-Star. You can still be successful, which we know PhysEd is for everybody. And I think we still battle some of the mentality where the parents of today, if they had a bad experience in their PhysEd class, they're a little leery, and that's not the case in Webster. Everybody has a wonderful experience, so great job. Scott and Gary with athletics. It's really refreshing to hear the multi-sport athlete approach. In today's day and age, there is sometimes an emphasis that kids need to play one sport in order to make a varsity team in Webster, and we know that's not true. It keeps them out of trouble if they're busy. It keeps them healthy. It's going to improve the academics, and it's really refreshing for me to hear that. And as someone that gets to see Webster teams play away from Webster, they always make Webster proud. The sportsmanship is impeccable, so keep up the great leadership.
Thanks. Tom?
I couldn't see anything. Very important.
Thanks, Tom. What do you need?
Fritz has, I think, just spoken on Oliver behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. On the Scholar-Athlete status, how many members of the team must meet that standard to be considered Scholar-Athlete?
They have formulas, Mike, that depending on the size of teams. So for instance, a football team, I believe you have to have 11-plus student athletes that make a 90 or higher. One of the things that I'm proud of, too, is you can keep reaching down even lower than 90, as long as you're, that average of the number of students that you pull, still keep the team average above 90. So we, and again, they get an award, they get a PIN and a certificate. So we would rather recognize all those kids that are striving to be 90-plus, and as opposed to, if you go to some of the other school districts, they will just 90 or higher. Or what they'll do is they'll take whatever the minimum is and then try to have the highest team GPA out there. I don't think that's, at least my philosophy is, I would rather reward the team and as many kids as we can because I think they're truly working hard in that respect. So each team, a tennis team, may only have six kids that need to qualify at that. So it's sports-specific.
So you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, on the GPAs for the athletes. Do we know what the average GPA is for all students?
All student athletes or all students?
All students.
Hmm, academics.
That's a good question.
That's a Mr. Camina question.
I do not have the 12-13 data. 11-12 data. The overall GPA was 84, or it was, it was in the low 80s. And remember, last year's report, we actually showed a correlation between the number of activities that you're involved with, the number of seasons that you're involved, and if you're involved in one season of activity, your GPA was X, and then if you're involved in two seasons, it was X plus 1, and then if you were involved in three seasons, it was X plus 3.
Well, that's what I was getting at, is, you know, the involvement in athletics.
Over the fall, 94% to 93% for varsity GPAs. What did that really mean?
I mean, the slide that was up? I think that was the Scholar-Athlete, the Scholar Teams, so 90, I think--
No, this is all the, all the student athletes.
Oh, all the student athletes in the fall season, their GPA was 93 or 94.
Every varsity.
Every, yes, every varsity.
That's correct.
94.
Yep.
You take a team like the cross-country team, we had over 50 kids, and you can count on not even one hand, other kids that didn't at least get 90. And so forth, you have kids with 98s, 99s, so.
Just to piggyback on what Fritz was saying about the multi-sport athletes, and again, we have a lot of kudos to Fritz, too, because he used to be a director of physical education when he was here before he left to go to another district. So he's, you know, been a great supporter of physical education and athletics. So, he's, he's, you know, been a great supporter of physical education and athletics. And one of the things that we always encourage the kids is if, if the sport that you love, give it a hundred percent. Take some time away from it and, again, choose a sport that maybe is gonna keep you fit. And cross-country is a great example of that. Anybody can run. And track and field is another one. You can take your, your skills and utilize them in that sport. And if you look at those two sports, we have tremendous participation, Mike, in those. So, when Scott says we have fifty kids in, on a varsity team, there's another fifty kids on the JV or sixty kids on the JV, which is fantastic. In fact, we're growing and growing in those sports right now. It's unbelievable.
How many sports teams do we have as far as different types of sports?
We have thirty-six varsity programs. We have, out of the thirty-six, I believe, six are combined between Schrader and Thomas, but then we have another thirty that are...
So, about thirty-six different sports.
Any plans for the future of more sports being added?
I don't think you can find a sport in New York State except for rifle. We're not, we're not too thrilled about, but that we don't have, that we don't offer. Okay? There are a few, but...
There's not many. There's a, there's a, an interest on some of the other Monroe County Athletic Directors in regards to fishing. It's huge in other states. And actually, Kevin Sayers has approached me and has, he's been talking with some other ADs because he wants to get it possibly here in Webster. So, that, that's another one.
There's a competition now with fly fishing that they have for various area search teams. They're actually sports teams are put together and they actually have points and they have time limits and they have sections up in the Adirondacks and they pull. And I know there's other schools around that actually do this in PA. So, that'd be pretty neat.
One last comment to your report. When the question was posed to our Strategic Plan Focus Group, what does it mean to be community-ready? There was a common thread that was running through answers and that thread happened to be the value of volunteering. And it's great that our athletes are participating in this, that they are willing to participate without expecting anything in return. It kind of fits right in with our, our core beliefs, our PBIS and our care model. So, I congratulate you and all the athletes and all the coaches for participating in this.
Thank you.
Board members, this does take, it does require action. May I have a motion to accept the Athletic PE report? Thank you. Second will be Fritz. All in favor? Motion carries, seven-zero. Thank you, PE and Athletics.
Thank you.
See you in the fall, Jen.
One of the benefits of being, working with the AHA is the coordinator for the region sent over water bottles for you. So, I'm gonna give you this and you can pass these water bottles out to your fellow board members.
Oh, thank you.
Hold per.
Thank you, Jen. All right, we move into our Superintendent's Report. Thank you.
I'm pleased to start my first official Superintendent's Report of the new year with exciting news about our students. Two-hundred-and-ninety-six students from Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas High Schools have been recognized by the College Board with Advanced Placement Scholar Awards. That's two-hundred-and-ninety-six with Advanced Placement Scholar Awards. Now, these are given in recognition of demonstrated college-level achievement on AP exams taken in the spring of 2013, this past May. So, our Webster students scored an average of four-point-zero-seven out of a possible five on our 2013 AP exams and received recognition in the following levels of the College Board's AP Scholar Recognition Program. Thirty-one Webster students were designated as National AP Scholars. Now, this is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So, thirty-one, this is the highest level of recognition for AP Scholars. Ninety-nine Webster students have been given AP Scholars with Distinction, granted to students who received an average score of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken and a score of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And this is cumulative for their entire school career. Eighty-three Webster students earned AP Scholar with Honors, granted to students who receive an average score of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And a total of a hundred-and-fourteen Webster students earned AP Scholar Awards, granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. So, this recognition further celebrates our students' achievement and the continuous work of making all students career, college, and community-ready, work that was prioritized by our Board of Education as in its goals and implemented by our dedicated faculty and staff. And I just want to put this in perspective, these numbers, and say in 2011, we had two-hundred-and-forty-four students recognized. And over the past two years, that number has increased to two-hundred-and-ninety-six. So, we've gained fifty-two students being recognized in this program over the past two years. So, that shows that we, we have a strong program, we have a strong commitment, and these students are taking skills with them as they go into college, as whether, as well as significant tuition savings for them and their family as they enter into college. Now, let's juxtapose that wonderful honor with this week, when we had the release of the three-eight scores. So, again, the three-eight scores are a new baseline based on college and career readiness back mapped from that senior year. So, we did get our three-eight scores released. It was the first year of this new assessment and it is a baseline for measuring progress. So, parents, if you have a student in grades three through eight and you have an email with us on Infinite Campus, I sent emails out to all parents yesterday. If you don't have an email with us, you have a hard copy of a letter coming to you in the mail with our district scores. And I want to let you know that the Commissioner and the State are preparing individual student scores, which we will send out as soon as we receive them. And we expect them maybe September, we're hoping early September. But the State provides those individual scores to us. They will be annotated with information for parents to understand and we will send them out as soon as we get them and deliver them to you. So, the way we learn from these new assessments will be different than in the past. We'll receive approximately twenty-five percent of the questions asked on these assessments back with annotations and instructions so that we can analyze them and learn from them. We'll also receive subgroup reports of student performance by grade level and by content area. So, what's different is that we're going to receive reports of how our students perform to the Common Core standards rather than how they perform to individual test items. So, the common sense says that this information will drive us more to teaching to the standards than to individual test questions. And that's a very different way of releasing information than it's been in the past and we'll be learning from that. So, we've been trying to communicate about that. I know it's been in the press quite a bit and we're very confident in our staff and in our students as they engage with this new process to prepare them differently for the future that they will face as they graduate than the future that we faced when we graduated from high school. So, we're, it's an interesting measure. We have two different measures that we're announcing today, the AP distinctions that have only been increasing and then our new baseline for three-eight. And what we know is that each year that students are with us, they engage more and they learn at higher levels. So, finally, a brief word about back-to-school communication coming your way. Our back-to-school community newsletter will be mailed later this month. Please remember to refer to it as a useful source of information. It is the letter that we put all of the yearly information required notifications in. So, you really want to take a look at it and read through it. It has lots of information about school as you prepare to send your children back to our eleven schools. We also are putting our website up on the screen for you. Visit our website, websterschools.org. You can get to that website twenty-four-seven for any questions you may have relative to your child's school or about the district at large. And be sure to visit some new features. We have a Facebook and YouTube site for all the latest Webster School proud moments. And with that, we are very much looking forward to the return of our staff and our students in just a few weeks. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Adele. We'll now move into Board Business. We do have a gift from the Allison Edward Johnson Foundation for Accessible Playground Equipment at Schlegel Road. Jim, any other information that we need to know about that?
No, I think you summarized and I just, we'll say that this is the second of gifts. The first phase of playground equipment at Schlegel Road happened about a year and a half ago. And this donation, the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars from the Johnson Foundation and the district is very thankful for that. And I know Francine just came in and I don't know if she would like to say anything, but we're very pleased to be able to start Phase Two at Schlegel Road for, with this playground equipment.
So, that was for...
Yes.
So, yes, we are very fortunate to once again receive this gift. And the Schlegel Road School community has been using the playground quite happily, I must say. But then I've also heard from other community members that many people are coming to the playground. So, it's really a nice asset for all of us here in Webster. And I can't thank the foundation enough for giving us this opportunity. So, we'll be starting in the fall and kids are looking forward to it.
I do have to say that there are some days when I take us to this Schlegel Road playground and he has just a wonderful time.
Great, great. The kids are enjoying it. Any questions or, make sure you stop by, check it out. There's some fun things with the grown-ups too, right Adele? Thank you.
May we have a motion from the Board to accept the gift, please? Second, please? Sue's got it? Okay. I wasn't sure if that was...
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now going to look at tax rates. So, the voters approved in May an estimated tax rate increase of two-point-six-seven. Correct. And tonight, the Board will finalize those tax rates, but I think that tax rate changed. Can you tell us, Jim?
Yes. Thank you, Mike. The Board has a packet. There's seven exhibits in the packet. I'll just go through each one of them so we can get to the resolution page. Exhibit one is the tax rate summary and as the Board has in front of it, you'll see the tax rates that were estimated in May that the voters seen. And those were an increase of two-point-six-seven in Webster and Penfield, two-point-six-four in Walworth and Ontario. Now, based on our final assessments and our final equalization rates, the same tax levy that we proposed in May, I'm happy to say that we've been able to reduce the tax rate and the tax rate increase will be two-point-four-four. It's down about a quarter of a percent from what we projected in May for both Webster and Penfield. And in Walworth and Ontario, two-point-three-nine percent increase, again, also down about a quarter of a percent. Exhibit two is the tax computation form that just shows how the tax rates are calculated and how they're proportioned between the two counties and the four districts. Page three are the final general fund revenues. Those are the same revenues that would have been proposed back in May. They're in final form for Board approval today. And I would just say that the word "final" didn't spell check right, so you could just change that thirteen-fourteen to say "final" instead of "fennel." Exhibit four is the general funds budget that was approved by the voters. Exhibit five is the transfer of funds. And in June, the Board approved estimated transfers. And if you look at the document, you'll see that in the column to the left. Now, today, we'll be asking the Board to approve final transfers in August. And you'll notice that for the capital reserve, there will be no transfer recommended. For the tax cert, there'll be no transfer recommended. For the insurance reserve, it's up slightly and that takes care of the interest that was accumulated from, from the year. The unemployment reserve is the same and that's what is being transferred into the revenues of the budget. The money that's coming from the insurance reserves going into the retirement contribution reserve, so that number's increased slightly because of the interest in the insurance reserve. The retirement contribution reserve, again, is because we'll be using that million-five for, as a revenue transferred into the, this year's budget. And there'll be no additional transfer into the retirement contribution reserve. Exhibit six is the document you approved back in June, which highlights those June transfers. And page seven is the final tax rates for 2013-14. In Webster, twenty-three dollars, point-four-six-four-three-oh-eight. Penfield, twenty-one dollars, point-three-five-two-five-three-oh. Walworth, twenty-one dollars, seventy-one, two-six-five-nine. And in Ontario, the same, twenty-one-seventy-one, twenty-six-fifty-nine. Again, two-point-four-four percent increase, down from the two-point-six-seven that was projected.
Jim, could you just briefly explain why Webster's is higher than the other...
The Webster tax rate is different than the Penfield tax rate because Penfield's assessed at a hundred percent and Webster's assessed at ninety-one percent, the equalization rate. If you were to divide those, you'll see that's about a nine percent difference between those two tax rates. And you can see that on the calculation on exhibit two.
Thank you.
So, tonight, the recommended resolution is recommended at the Board of Education that the following tax rates, transfers, and revenues be approved and necessary warrants be executed. And once these are approved, we'll be completing the warrants. I need to get the information from the county on the star and then we'll get it around to the Board for signature. Entertainer, any questions the Board might have?
Jim, just to be clear, we're looking at...
Drop the tax rate from two-point-six-seven to two-point-four-four?
The tax rate increase from, going down from two-point-six-seven to two-point-four-four.
Okay.
Correct. And that's about a six cents difference in the tax rate.
Other questions? Seeing none, may we have a motion to accept the rates, transfers, and revenues and necessary warrants being executed?
So, move.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, you want to tell us about the tax settlement or surchiary proceedings, whatever it is?
You have a resolution in front of you that was prepared by our attorney. And the resolution recommends the approval to settle the tax surchiary proceedings with target for the years 2008, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Money to repay what back taxes that are due will be coming from our tax surchiary reserve later in the year. We'll have a resolution to make that transfer.
Okay, I see there's an official document there, so Cindy's gonna have to catch the motion and the second. So, can we have a motion that agrees to settle the tax surchiary proceedings?
Shane. I'll second.
Thank you, Sue. All in favor?
Right.
Motion carries. You didn't need a roll call in there, did you? No, thank you.
No.
All right, Jim, would you give us the reports for May and June?
Okay, you have two treasures reports in front of you for May and June. Just over two million dollars in receipts in May. Almost all of that money came in the form of sales tax. And at that time, we had just over fifty-seven million dollars in our bank accounts. You have the School Lunch Federal and Capital Trust and Agency on page two with the beginning and ending balances. And then on page three, we have a summary of investments. Most of our investments are at point-one-five to point-two percent. And during May, there was just over sixty-one million dollars in investments. Let me do June as well?
Why don't you? We can do them together.
Okay. In June, we had five-point-seven million dollars in receipts. And almost three million dollars came from lottery aid or, or state aid. We had, I have to even look at the lines because they're getting confusing here. We had BOCES aid, just over a million dollars, which is another form of state aid, and our public access aid, almost a million dollars, which came also from state aid. So, as you can see, you had almost five million dollars of state aid coming in, in June for the 2012-13 school year. And that would be the last payment for the twelve-thirteen school year coming from the state. At year end, we had just over forty million... At year end, we had just over $40 million in investments, I'm sorry, in our bank accounts. And when you look at the investment page, page three, there was just over $43 million in investments. And the rates were still the same at .15 to .2.
Questions? Motion to accept, please, the May and June treasurer's report? Thank you, Mike. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Jim, you're still up for the revenue and expense reports.
Okay, the next report you have is the three-year budget comparison. And this is a quarterly report that comes to the board. You have, the first three columns are three years of actuals. The next column is the current budget. And the third column from the right is the actual budget year-to-date. So really take you to page three because that's really the bottom line. And you'll see as our actual revenues, or I'm sorry, actual expenses to date, over 140 million. We had $3 million in encumbrances at year end, down from about $4 million the previous year. Our unencumbered balance at year end was about $4 million, which meant we spent about 97 percent of our budget this year. When you think about $4 million on 148 million, which was our total revenues with encumbrances. That $4 million three was what was used to begin to fund the appropriated fund balance. And as if you remember back at budget time, our appropriated fund balance and just in the last report for, for this coming year, I want to find that page. We had an appropriated fund balance of $5,515,828. That $4 million three went into that $5 million. The balance of that money came from the revenue side. And as you look at the revenue report, you'll see the excess revenue that we had for each of the areas. The bottom line on the bottom of page three, $1,416,69,000 is what our revenues in excess of what we had budgeted. The combination of that expense, under-expense and over-revenues combined to the $5,505. Some adjustments were made to some of our other accounts. But at year end, we, we ended up being able to, to, we're about $200,000 under the 4 percent that were legally allowed to carry. And we have an appropriated fund balance of $5,505.
I just want to make sure, Paul and Mike, since you're new to the board, did you follow that?
We'll go through this in detail with you.
Essentially, what you don't spend in your budget rolls over into the following year into our appropriated fund balance. What excess revenues we have also roll in it because it's money we've collected or have. And that appropriated fund balance, if it were zero in any given year when we built our budget, then we wouldn't have to have any money left over in expense or any money left over in revenues because we were zero. But with that number, we either have to have expense left over, under expenditures or excess revenue. If those two numbers didn't meet the appropriated fund balance, we would have to tap into our reserves or we would have to lower the appropriated fund balance and increase one of our other revenues to balance the budget.
With that being said, may we have a motion to accept the revenue and expense report? Thank you, Tom. Second? Hi Fritz, all in favor? Motion carries. We now have a request for health insurance from an individual. They have agreed to pay the full monthly insurance charge according to our regulation 4180. Is there anything else that needs to be explained in that, Jim?
No, this is very common. The board has received these in the past. The individual will be paying 100 percent of the health insurance costs. They will just be staying in our plan. Okay, in, in regulation 4180 and a lot of our contracts, when an employee who was with us and was eligible for insurance when they retired, when they deceased, the spouse can ask to stay on our plan if they pay 100 percent of the cost. That's what, and they have to request that and the board has to approve it by regulation. So it's costing us nothing, the district, nothing. They pay 100 percent.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion to accept the request? Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. All right. As required annually, the code of conduct is reviewed and approved by the Board of Education. The board has the responsibility of maintaining a safe and orderly school environment where education and learning can thrive in a safe, respectful environment. And that's what we are going to do tonight. There's an amendment to the Dignity Act, though, has led some, to some additional language which is relevant to our code. So I don't know if you want to highlight any of that, Adele?
Sure. So the definition of harassment now includes bullying and cyberbullying according to the amendments in the Dignity Act. So cyberbullying is defined as harassment or bullying by any form of electronic communication. And includes incidents occurring off school property that create or would foreseeably create a risk of substantial disruption within the school environment. So we have been reviewing these changes with our team. So our curriculum must now include instruction in safe and responsible use of the internet and electronic communications and emphasize discouraging acts of harassment, bullying and discrimination. So where we've infused this at the elementary school is in our station rotations with our social learning curriculum. If you have an elementary student, you will hear about this, that they, they have been doing this and they're going to infuse this explicit teaching into the station rotation and make stations to educate students on these new changes. So if you, in middle school, we're going to continue with our explicit teaching. And we do explicit teaching in our care, in our PBIS, our care attributes. We say, here's behavior in the hallway that we expect, here's behavior in the classroom, here's behavior on the school bus. We'll be infusing language that discourages bullying and cyberbullying into that language that we do at middle school, into that explicit teaching. And in high school, we'll be using seminars in the morning show to get these messages across to our high school students. We also have a health class in the high school where we can do more personal and explicit teaching. So in the code, you see changes, and we've put them in italics, in the rights and responsibilities section. It's in the preamble and in the executive summary, but it's also in the rights and responsibilities sections. The definition is on page five of the code and the rights and responsibilities begin on page six. And we differentiate students' rights and responsibilities. So we're including that students must respond to incidents of harassment by reporting to school personnel within the code. We have rights and responsibilities for parents to teach and model for their children how to constructively manage and respond to incidents of harassment and bullying. And rights and responsibility for adults in school, that's teachers, that's administrators, that's superintendent. We confront issues of harassment and investigate reports of harassment. And we also have rights of the board that you are required to have Dignity Act coordinators in each building. So we do have that in place. And all coordinators have attended the required training and preparation for the 13-14 school year. So we have worked for many years on our social learning curriculum and our PBIS through the school environment, which means that all staff and that, that supports your goals will model and teach positive expectations through the 13-14 school year. So you'll see that language and those changes in italics all throughout our school code of conduct.
Adele, do we want to, because it's a new school year, review our protocol for visitors entering the building during the school day?
Yes, we can do, I know, I know that our officer of safety and security, Neil Flood, has been doing that. And as, we do have a standing safety committee that works, K-12, which has been doing quite a bit of review of safety expectations. And we'd be happy to have them report to you. And Neil will report to you on that.
Any questions on the code of conduct? Seeing no questions, may we have a motion to accept code of conduct? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving along, we have a document regarding compliance laws for Medicaid that need action. So Kim, would you kind of fill us in?
We have had a formal compliance plan in place since about five years ago when the Medicaid office in New York State went through a, an audit with the federal government and had their own compliance plan, which also rolled over to every district, having to have their own compliance plan. A year ago, we returned to claiming for Medicaid services that we provide in the schools after a moratorium and freeze on claims for roughly a year and a half. Now that we are back in the position of making claims again, we have reached a threshold that requires us to register with the state and federal government our compliance program. And we need to have, certain aspects of the plan needed to be clarified in terms of who was the compliance officer and how anonymous suspicion of fraud could be brought to the attention of Medicaid. So as a result, we do need to have our compliance plan posted on our website. And we will be putting in place some other postings, similar to, yeah, job postings, places publicly where current information on how anonymous reports can be made in what's referred to as the whistleblower aspect of the compliance plan.
These are regulatory requirements that have been placed in recent years because of this revenue flowing through school districts. Not only is it school districts, it's every public organization that receives Medicaid revenue.
Seeing no questions, may we have a motion to accept the Medicaid document? May I have a second? Thank, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Kim.
Eric, it looks like math would like some textbooks.
Hi, good evening. Last year, we talked about how at the middle school level, we were looking for resources for our math program. We vetted pretty much every resource that was on the market, new and old, through presentations from vendors. As we also said, we anxiously awaited that the state materials, which we're still anxiously awaiting, we've seen some of them for the middle school, but they're still in the pipeline. We have them for the high school and they're good. But for the middle school, we're still in a position where we need some additional, we need the additional resources for our middle school students, parents, teachers, all involved in the education process. So in front of you, you have the recommendation for Math in Focus for grade seven and eight. And that would be our primary resource for the middle school math program. And any questions?
Questions? No? Come back to you.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom?
Any questions?
Any questions? Eric, is the Math in Focus an extension of Math Expressions K6?
It's an extent, it's not the same author. They're both, they both come from
Same company.
Singapore, that Singapore math series. Math in Focus was one of the original Singapore math textbooks. And it was written K6 for, or K5, I'm sorry, in Singapore. They then contracted with some authors in New York, or in, in the United States, actually out in Washington, as well as brought over a few of the authors from the original Singapore series to write a 6-8 extension for that series. And that was written post Common Core, so it's only been around in the world of the Common Core. So it wasn't something where they had to retool and adopt for the Common Core. It was written with the Common Core in mind. And it fits very nicely and dovetails well with the Math Expressions at the K6 level. And we do not anticipate Karen Fousan, Dr. Fousan, writing a 7-8 series. She actually had to have her arm twisted to write a sixth grade component for that series. It was originally only K5. The textbook company kind of twisted her arm into writing the sixth grade because they knew that enough districts wanted that sixth grade piece. But there, from conversations with the author, we know there's not a seventh and eighth grade one coming.
Thank you. For students who are taking, eighth grade students who are taking algebra, will they be using Math in Focus?
They will be using it at some point. The series actually is split up into a book one and a book, or book A and book B for each grade level. So the students who are in algebra this year will be utilizing mainly book B, but they'll be using components of book A and book B throughout the year as needed. And really, the students in the accelerated track in middle school will start utilizing Math in Focus seven, book A in sixth grade and then cycle all the way through. So they will, every student in the middle school will use all four of those books at some point. It'll just rotate through when they see them. They may not see them, a student on the traditional track would take all the eighth grade and eighth grade. Those accelerated students would take some of it in eighth, some of it in seventh grade, some of it in eighth grade. This year, because of the, the implementation of the Common Core, our seven accelerated students did not go as far as we would have liked. And so there's more instruction to be had at eighth grade this year. So there will be more use from the accelerated eighth grade students of the Math in Focus this year than there will be of any other year. But they will get that instruction at some point. One of our tenants, when we looked at adopting, or looked at our acceleration program at the middle school was not to eliminate curriculum, but to compact the curriculum so that we're teaching all the standards and teaching all the content just in a shorter timeframe.
One thing that was made clear to the board was the need for parent resources. Is it readily available?
Yes. And that was one of our reasons for going with this series. Even if the modules were available for middle school, I think that this would have been a recommendation regardless, because of the parent resources that are available online, the modules from New York State are simply that, just a module of here's instruction and here's a student resource and a parent resource, or a teacher resource. There is no parent resources available. With Math in Focus, there are online supports, there's online access to the textbook, there's some video lessons. So there are, there are additional parent resources that are available. And that was a determining factor in this resource over some of the other ones.
Good, thank you. Sue, anything?
No, you have.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
It's primarily seventh and eighth grade, but our accelerated students will have some of the seventh grade when they're in sixth grade.
Are teachers already familiar with the, in focus?
We have tentatively scheduled a training for next week to have an outside vendor come in and provide some of the training. We've been, the teachers have been utilizing this resource as their primary instructional resource for the past five to six months as a kind of pilot. So they're familiar with the resource. But we're going to have one of the publishers, Professional Development Focus, come in and do a training next week, provided it's approved tonight, so that those teachers will have that experience and be fully aware of all the components of the textbook.
And they'll have, if, if approved, they'll have access to training throughout the school year or?
We don't think that we're going to need anything additional beyond the addition for the initial day. However, there's online professional development as part of the series. So as a teacher is planning at seven o'clock at night for the lesson tomorrow, which inevitably is going to happen, we don't want it to, but we know that that comes up. Or even just going through the lesson going, oh no, what am I going, what is this, how am I supposed to do this? There are online videos that are part of this series that the author has put together, walking through, not every lesson, but most of the lessons and certainly the, the more challenging or the newer pieces to the program. So there's embedded professional development available online in a, in a blended environment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Any other questions? May we have a motion to accept the Math in Focus recommendation? Textbook adoption? Thank you. Thank you, Mike, second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Eric. Okay, we move into some old business now, which is the adoption of our board, actually our district, goals. One of the key priorities of a Board of Education is to set the direction under which the district operates. Now, it's true that the board oversees the education of our students and it's responsible for the district operations, but I want to tell the public, the board does not directly run the district's day-to-day operations. So if you're looking for goals that are dealing with that, this is not the place. So earlier this month, the board, with the assistance from the administrative team, reviewed the instructional data. This was followed by a discussion regarding district goals for the coming year. Now, the board agreed that the goal should continue to be developed in three distinct categories, in the first category being academics. The board is committed to supporting and attaining excellence. And we hope that each school will increase the rigor and depth of the content area. And one way we hope that this will be accomplished is by refocusing our PLCs or our professional learning communities, that they can anchor that rigor and depth at each grade level. Now, it also should be noted that because of the feedback from the Strategic Planning Focus Groups held last spring, we are making a commitment to career and technical opportunities. Now, if you want to see the complete report from the Strategic Planning Focus Group, it's available by visiting our website, clicking on the Strategic Plan link, and then going to Strategic Plan Focus Groups. Now, that was in a real quick nutshell, our first goal. So board members, do you have any comments on that academic goal?
I do.
Sue?
I was just looking at it and I thought if we added two words to the third bullet under district efforts, continuing our commitment to AP participation and achievement. Does that, is that something the board would support?
Okay, do we need an official motion to change this?
I think we can prove it as amended.
With amendment, okay.
I don't think we need to have two readings.
All right. Okay. No other comments on our academic goal? All right, let me just go back to professional learning communities because I'm not sure our audience knows what they are. But the board believes that the formal mission of education is not simply that our students are taught, but that they learn. And when teachers and administrators continuously seek and share learning and they act on what they learn, they can enhance the effectiveness as professionals. And these professional learning communities, it's a powerful staff development approach and it has the potential strategy for student improvement. And working together to improve the student achievement becomes a routine work of everybody in the school. Every teacher team participates in this ongoing process, identifying the current level of student achievement, establishing goals to improve the current level, working together to achieve that goal, and providing periodic evidence of that progress. That goal, I think, is commendable. And so if you don't know what our professional learning communities are, I hope I kind of explained it. All right, we'll move on to our second goal. As we saw in our code of conduct, our goal is to have a safe, respectful, caring environment sustained in each of our schools. Positive behavior intervention supports is the framework by which we model and teach this to our school community. Now, the board also saw the value of student leaders. We were impressed with our transitional programs, our web program at the middle school and our link program at the high school. And one new aspect of this goal is to cultivate multiple opportunities for student leadership. So you'll see that in that second goal. So board members, would anyone like to comment on our second school culture goal?
I appreciate the board's involvement.
You know, student leaders aren't necessarily the ones that stand up at the podium for assemblies or lead all the school chairs. Student leaders are, can be the individual that you find talking in the library to a student who feels frustrated with his life or having a conversation in the parking lot with a student that had a bad day. These students make a serious impact on those who need help the most. And making a positive impact on anyone by sitting down with that individual, listening to that individual, showing him that you care, that really changes life. And that's what we want our school to be.
I think it reinforces the fact, too, that professional education takes place within the walls of buildings, that the community is responsible and should be involved and assist where they can. And that's really cool, too.
Okay. And then we have a third goal. The board believes that the school's operations and budgets should reflect the academic and financial values of the community. We strive for, and we try to practice, intelligent economy through securing the maximum educational return for every dollar spent. So the third goal supports all aspects of our instructional program, including maintenance of our facilities and resources to ensure the safety of our students, our staff, and our community. So would any board member like to comment additionally on that goal? Yes?
I really like how this is worded because it really highlights, I think, our staff that, I'll use it, noneducational. They're the ones that are keeping our building safe, clean, they're working odd hours, they're really the unsung heroes and they're, it does come at a cost and it's something that we expect and we don't think about enough. And I like how this is worded because when I read it, it does remind me of the people that are doing that on a daily basis.
Thank you. Any other comments in general? All right, seeing none, we need to adopt the district goals as amended. Motion to accept. Thank you, Mike, and seconded by Fritz. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now move into our consent agenda. Board, you had an opportunity to take a look at it. It includes minutes of our regular meetings, personnel actions, recommendation on the Committee on Special Education, recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education, our district organizational chart, our universal pre-kindergarten program approval, bids on battery-powered rider scrubbers and pizza bagels. And I believe, Fritz, you wanted to make an adjustment here.
Yeah, I would just like to ask Adele to explain to the public a change in some restructuring with the central office staff. I think that'd be important for everybody to hear.
All right, this is the first year that we have changed the structure of our assistant superintendents. So we had two, one at secondary, one at elementary, and we have consolidated to one, K-12. We had, actually, our assistant superintendent for elementary was with us through February of last year and then she retired and then we went K-12. We have a new person that we promoted to that position in these personnel actions and that's Mr. Brian Nenin from, was former Willing School principal and now is being promoted to assistant superintendent for instruction. And he's got a big job because he's going to be working with the K-12 program. So going to be kind of doing two jobs in one as part of a consolidation of administration.
So there is a, there's going to be a savings in cost, but there's also more work to be done.
Correct. So he will be picking up his share of the work and the senior staff is all pitching in and picking up a little more of the work. And we're working as a very strong team.
Yep. Any other questions before we answer a motion for a consent agenda? Then we will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Thank you, second. Thank you, Tom. All in favor of the consent agenda? That motion carries. Before we adjourn, Adele, just so that everyone doesn't forget, when is opening day for our students?
Opening day for our students, okay. I'm going to pass this to Carmen, who manages the calendar, because I do not want to get this wrong. We've had a change this year.
The opening day this year for students is Tuesday after Labor Day. So I think it's Tuesday, September 4th, but it is Tuesday for kids, September 3rd.
Oh, they know.
Okay, so that's why I did not want to.
Yep, so it's the first time, probably the first time in Webster history that our students are starting on the Tuesday after Labor Day, not the Wednesday.
And opening day for our staff?
For our staff is Wednesday, August 28th. And it's the first time in Webster history that we're actually starting with all of our, all of our colleagues in August before Labor Day.
And to clarify that, August 28th day, our colleagues will be learning in their buildings. And then August 29th is our K-12 kickoff celebration, which we will invite the board to. That will be August 29th in the morning. And we have the whole K-12 staff together. It's quite a wonderful time. So one day of learning and then we'll be together on the 29th and then they'll be spending some time in classrooms in the afternoon, getting ready for students to arrive right after Labor Day.
Yep, so students will start in 25 days.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? Parents. That actually was for my daughters who are probably watching at home, so they have 25 days left.
Good job, Mr. Gumi.
Okay, please note, board members, that our next meeting is Thursday, September 5th. And with that being said, may we have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.